Welcome to the EWEB meeting, December 5th. We'll do a quick agenda check and I will begin the new facility awareness process. So I'll do that here really quickly. Facility and safety awareness and meeting logistics briefing. Thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. EWEB management and subject matter experts are present in the room and virtually. The meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. Please speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Public testimony is welcome. Sign up forms are available at the back of the room. Visitor access is limited before meeting room and restrooms. Go through the story. Welcome on the first floor, just exit through when they're right across the hallway. In the event of an emergency such as a fire or security incident, follow all instructions given by staff. If evacuation is required, please calmly proceed to the nearest safe exit as identified and directed by staff. Evacuate away from the building to the farthest points in the parking lots to allow clear and immediate access for those responders. Okay, now I'll do a quick agenda check. Any items? Okay, alright, then we'll move on to items from board members, general manager, and also with John Burnell since he's online. John, do you have anything?
Are you speaking to me? I'm sorry, I've had a little trouble hearing you. Yeah, no, the only thing I'd like to do is point out that I know our workers, both in and outside the facilities, work hard and everything. But especially given the weather that we've had this week and everybody out in the field, I just want to acknowledge the tough job they've done and the great job they've done. So hats off to everyone, all the line crews and water workers and everybody else because it probably hasn't been easy. So, thank you.
And then the water shed council this last month, things are chugging right along with some of the habitat restoration that's going upriver. It's one of the council's biggest budgets they've ever had, bringing in more staff, which is a positive thing for our watershed and our clean drinking water, which they're a valuable partner of ours with. So forward to meeting with them possibly next week if I'm still on topic.
Bob Schlossberg, nothing for me. Alright, well, I will quickly just say I had the pleasure of creating a wastewater treatment plant. I also participated in the EWEB run to stay warm, which seemed like a really positive event. And there were, it seemed, record numbers. So that's a big benefit for our low-income customers that really benefit from that event. So I appreciate all those who were involved in that and put that together. Thank you to Adam, Frank, and Jeremy, who all helped with the Rotary presentation that I did on Tuesday of last week. Appreciate the support, putting the background down, being there to answer the really tough questions. So, thanks. And then I just wanted to note a couple of dates that are coming up. The celebration of business was noted as being January 30th. I guess there hasn't been any announced yet, but it was mentioned at a recent chamber event. So I hope that is actually happening and they get the registration put up that we are a part of that. And then as part of my role representing EWEB through ElCog, the ElCog appreciation dinner is going to be held March 8th at the Cottage Grove Park. You all can save the date and it's for me. You're McCray. Alright, Frank.
President Carlson, commissioners, good evening. Just a couple of things. President Carlson, we will follow up on the financial returns for the run to stay warm. That's something that we do annually and that'll be included in the next general manager's report for next month. I did want to acknowledge one thing that was reported to the board, and that was two awards that our communications department received from the American Public Power Association. These were national awards for two videos that they produced. One of them around the history and the decision associated with the Lieberg project. And the other one was a video which tracks a person throughout the day and where their dollar goes when they're using energy. And if you haven't seen those, I provided the links to commissioners. But both very well done. Y'all thought it out and I wanted to acknowledge their work on that. And also, separate subject, the presentation that President Carlson did at the U team Rotary. I thought that was really well done. But representing, you know, a number of different topics, but talking about Lieberg as well as energy and pricing and some other things. And I just thought that went really well and you did a great job.
Thank you. Thank you to staff, that really worked. And so, big recognition for that. Well, next up then, we will move on to correspondence.
Commissioners, there were really three informational items in your correspondence. The first one being really just a preparatory item for next month. Commissioners, as you all know, because your experienced commissioners go through a process of creating liaisons where appropriate, and this is a reminder of who's in what role for planning for next month. The second item was a follow-up, I believe, from Commissioner Borowski around local banking and our investments in local banking and the risks that local banking has relative to some of the larger banks and pressures from interest rates and other things making local investments. It highlights some of the restrictions that we are under as well as some of the opportunities that we've taken advantage of over the last few years. And then the final one is also an annual event where we start preparing for our independent financial audit. That's important to commissioners because in that role, the auditors really report back to the commissioners as well as management on the reliability and the confidence behind our financial statements, which is important when we go out for financing and bonding and some of these other things. And that process starts in the late fall and eventually culminates when you get a report either in April or May, depending on the timing, typically April, I believe. And so those were all informational items. We do have subject matter experts in the room if you have questions on those. But really no specific feedback requested from commissioners at this time, but we're providing for information. So if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
I'd just like to say thank you for the memo on the local banking. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Deborah.
The only comment that I have is on the liaison position. I wanted to throw out there that currently the vice chair, vice president, whatever that complete title is, for ElCog, and presumably will step into the next role of January. So we'd love to stay in that position. If you elect somebody else, they will actually be the president. So that's fine too, but up to you. Anyway, I wanted to say that. Any comments on liaison positions or the other items on correspondence? Okay, alright, then we will move on to public input. So like I said, we are changing up the way this process works a small amount in that the information that I would typically read is now, has been provided to potential speakers or is up on the screen for you to see, and I'm not going to read it. So the part that I will read, however, is this. Welcome to the public input session before this meeting. This fortunate agenda is dedicated to providing community members an opportunity to address the board about the EWEB topic or issue. We respectfully request speakers to adhere to the public input instructions and kind of contact that are provided during this sign-in, sign up and speak process, sign up to speak process. There it is. At this time, we have two people signed up to provide testimony. One caller and one in person, is that still the same? Okay. And we had, I think, six written testimonies in advance of the meeting that were provided to commissioners. When your name is called, you have three minutes to provide your comments. And now I will dabble in the public session and I will go to the telephone first and Mark Rabinowitz. Mark Rabinowitz, are you on the line?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, I wanted to call the board's attention to the recent financial meltdown of the new-scale, smaller nuclear reactor company. As you may know, they were planning to build new nukes at the Idaho National Engineering Lab along with utilities in Utah. But the finances behind the project suffered a loss of coolant, I mean, loss of finances accident, and it has been canceled. It's not the end of the smaller reactor concept, but it is a significant setback. While cost overruns are a concern with reactors, their synthesis of ultra-hazardous isotopes incompatible with life that will remain dangerous for longer than civilization has existed is the primary problem. You're considering utility legislative priorities this evening. It's worth remembering that EWEB was the only utility in Oregon to speak in favor of rescinding the 1980 citizens initiative to prohibit new nukes unless a national nuclear dump is someday built. EWEB isn't the only pro-nuclear utility in the state, but it was the only one to submit testimony in a bill last winter to overturn existing law. In the current issue of The Nation Magazine, there's an article titled "The Green New Deal Is The Opiate Of The Masses", and it makes the obvious, yet unpalatable point that solar panels, electric cars, and other techno fixes cannot sustain the unsustainable. Instead of hoping for green growth, we need to recognize that Earth is a sphere and not getting any bigger. And looming on the horizon is not mere natural limits, but political instability. One would be foolish to make predictions about the consequences of the war in Gaza. But it's obvious this could disrupt global energy shipments, perhaps more noticeably than in 1973, when only a few percent of global oil trade was disrupted. So we need to move beyond collective denial and bargaining, like pretending that new nukes is going to keep growth powered. We need radical honesty, but at this late date, it will probably be forced by circumstance, not preemptively chosen. Thanks for considering.
Thank you. Alright, next up in the room, we have Stacy Kuss.
My name is Stacy Kuss. I'm a resident of Board Eight. I'm also a senior vice president at Summit Bank, which is a commercial customer in Board One. And in reviewing this month's agenda, we noticed that the local investment and banking relationships were being discussed tonight. And I wanted to take this time to say thank you to EWEB and the commissioners for supporting local banking and by depositing with Summit Bank. We wanted to not only express our sincere thank you, but also wanted to share with you that now, more than ever, deposit dollars are so vital to community banks like Summit Bank as we continue to support the local economy. This year, $3 trillion has been siphoned off community bank balance sheets fleeing to national banks, government treasuries, and large wealth management firms. As deposit dollars continue to be funneled away, community banks in particular are impacted with the amount of dollars we have on deposit and available to lend out to small businesses in our area. Summit Bank is the only bank headquartered right here in Eugene. And as a Eugene-based bank, we were able to deploy EWEB's $3 million that they have on deposit with us that made us be able to make a significant impact in our local economy. Our average small business loans range between $50,000 and $100,000, which means with your help, we were able to lend those dollars back into this community, helping more than 30 Eugene businesses. Our commitment to Eugene is demonstrated every day with help from our depositors, and it is why it is so important for us to thank you for depositing with us. We would appreciate any consideration for additional monies that EWEB could direct to Summit Bank, keeping those dollars in this community. We are local. We employ 120 Eugene-area residents, many of which who are also EWEB customers. We are safe with FDIC insurance available up to $100 million through our Cedars and ICS accounts. And most importantly, we are committed to continuing our support of our local small businesses. So on behalf of Summit Bank and our employees, we just wanted to say thank you.
That concludes our public testimony. And now we've got time from commissioners. And thank you to both of the people who have testified this evening. I will say that we have spoken about public dollars for EWEB and have not had a local bank come and talk to us. So I really appreciate you coming out and letting us know that it makes an impact in the community. I think we have talked about that before, but it's wonderful to hear it firsthand and have real numbers for what the impact is. Thank you for coming on.
I was just giving a thumbs up, Stace.
Alright, thank you, thank you again. Okay, so next up, we will move on to the approval of consent calendar A. And I'm going to ask that we separate item two from the rest of the items. So I have a motion on
moving to approve consent calendar A minus.
Alright, so moved by Commissioner Schlossberg, seconded by McCray.
Sonia.
Yes, so Commissioner Brown, I pulled item two. So we're voting on item one and three.
Okay, my paperwork didn't make it, so I'm kind of sidelined there. So that's the one I asked, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was trying to help out. Okay.
No, you did it, you did fine, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so any comments on consent calendar A, items one and three?
President Carlson, did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, then all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. Okay, any opposed?
To an aye.
Commissioner Brown, was that an aye? It's a little delayed, so it wasn't clear which one you were on. Okay. Alright, okay, moving on then to item consent calendar A, item number two. Can I get a motion for that?
Could I speak to that?
Yes, I'll let you speak and then we'll have a motion.
Okay, I just wanted, for the record, abstain from voting. I do work for LR Brabham State World and I think, I mean, I don't see a conflict, but just for optics, I think it'd be best if I not vote on this. For abstain from voting.
Okay, Commissioner Brown is abstaining from voting on this particular item. Duly noted for the record. Okay, and I have a motion. Commissioner McCray moves and seconded by Schlossberg. Hey, all those in favor, say aye. Okay, and Commissioner Brown abstains. Okay, moving on to consent calendar B. Are there any items that like to pull? Alright, can I have a motion for consent calendar B?
Move consent calendar B.
Second. Alright, motion moved by Commissioner Borowski, seconded by McCray. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, then we will go to vote. All those in favor, say aye. Alright, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, next. Proposed budgets and prices. We welcome Deborah Hart, Erin Ballmer, and Alejandra. It's like we were just here. Proceed when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, President Carlson and commissioners. For the record, I'm Deborah Hart, the CFO. And with me at the table are Erin Ballmer, the Annual Finance Manager, and Aleisha Borges, our Budget and Rate Supervisor. Our Rates Manager, Adam Ru, and Senior Analyst Janice Lee and Daniel Davidson are here as well. Should you have any questions for them? So on the screen behind me is an overview of the stages of our financial planning calendar. And we're here in December at the final stage of the process. Last month, we reviewed the proposed budgets and prices and some board direction on the detailed draft budget along with the 2024 price proposals of each utility. Following the presentation this evening, there is a public hearing scheduled and then we'll be seeking board action on the 2024 budgets and price proposals. Board policy does establish each utility will have its own operations and maintenance and capital budget. Each budget is the maximum level of expenditure authorized by the board during this process. On the slide is a grid that represents these four budget areas. Figures noted on the screen correspond to the line items in attachment one of the 2024 proposed budget document. These are the same budgeted figures that we showed you last month, they have not changed. There are updates to attachment four and five to refine our year-end projections on reserves and metrics. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to talk about rates.
Thank you, Deborah. Good evening, commissioners. So looking to the water utility, as it positions for flexibility, building resilient foundational pieces, enabling ongoing source-to-tap effectiveness is vital. It needs exist to support capital investments, renewing aging infrastructure, plan and position for the water treatment plan, modernize our meters and our legacy information systems, as well as address inflationary pressures in ongoing operations. Meeting these challenges, proposed pricing changes by customer class are shown on the slide. They are the same as was presented in November. Similarly, for the electric utility, positioning for flexibility is key to delivering a reliable and resilient future. Strategic and operational guidance incorporated into 2024 planning includes sustaining and improving existing operations, inclusive of purchase power costs, largely from the Bonneville Power Administration, refunding Lieberg decommissioning efforts, renewing aging infrastructure, including substations and Carmen Smith, understanding and responding to grid modernization efforts, continued modernization of our meters and replacement of legacy information systems, and addressing inflationary pressures in ongoing operations. There's a lot in there. So to accomplish this, pricing changes are needed and proposed prices by customer class are shown on the slide. Again, same price proposal as was presented in November. As we look to affordability, we remain in the wake of inflation headlining economic news and the natural tension between our core values is clearly felt as we seek to uphold affordability while maintaining safe, reliable operations and steward a pledge to the environment and our community. The graph on the left of the slide assesses residential customer affordability as a measure of median household income. Average annual water and electric costs are shown for Eugene and comparator cities in the Northwest. For EWEB's average residential customer, combined electric and water bills equate to 3.5% median household income. This measure has shown improvement over many years, indicating increasing affordability for customers. Continue to look for opportunities to control costs and operate efficiently given the economic pressures facing our community. And for 2024, our customer care program funding has increased and will continue to be evaluated to support customer needs. Graphs on the right present average residential water and electric bill amounts among comparator utilities. These graphs reflect current pricing as of today. We fully anticipate other utilities will raise rates in the near term and have seen headlines indicating as much as similar pressures to utility operation exist across the region. For an average single-family residence, proposed rate increases translate to an estimated $3 increase on the water bill and an $11 increase on the electric bill. In terms of communicating the change, there is a year-round effort to inform customers about the budget and rate-setting process. Goal is to help customers understand how price changes will affect their bill. We seek to raise awareness about how rates are being used to provide safe and reliable services, maintain utility infrastructure and investment system improvements, and big services better. EWEB's award-winning communications team manages a myriad of communication channels, as shown on the slide, also prepared a detailed rates communication and information package that is provided to both staff and commissioners and will be updated following final approval of the budget. With that, we are prepared for the final public hearing on 2024 budgets and prices and happy to answer any questions that you may have. And so I pass it back to you, President Carlson.
Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up? I will open the public hearing. I will note that we are about 40 minutes ahead of time on time that was noted in the agenda. We didn't have any other education and signing up though, so it sounds like we'll keep an eye on, if somebody else comes, we'll welcome them up at 6:40. But I'll close the public hearing and we will move on with the rest of the comment period. And if there is somebody that shows up at 6:40, I'll just keep an eye on it.
President Carlson, I would note that if the board wants to have discussion and delay the actual vote until past 6:40, that would, I think that's what you're saying. So that if there is any public input, it would be before the board takes action.
Okay, but at this point, we can move on to any questions or comments from commissioners unless you have other information that you want to share. Okay, Commissioner McCray.
Yeah, just a quick comment, as always, you provide is super helpful and the couple of opportunities to engage in this content over the last couple of months is really helpful for me. So thank you, as always, and I would endorse the idea that we wait till vote until 6:40 or after.
Other head nods from that plan? Okay, alright, so the plan then is to move to item 11.
I just had some discussion as well.
Oh, you have discussion, okay, yes.
Yeah, thank you for all the information over the past few months.
Yeah, thank you for all the information over the past few months. It's a complex issue that we're dealing with. As was alluded, there's a lot of pressures that are being put on us all at once with increased prices from Bonneville, refunding Lieberg, some of all. Aging infrastructure, that it's all kind of coming to it once. Anytime that there's a rate increase, I myself, and I know all the rest of our Commissioners take it very seriously. We know how that our utility bills impact our customers. And so anytime that we have to raise rates, just know that we do it with a heavy heart. We know that it impacts them. You know, it's disproportionate to some of our lower-income customers. Yet we still have to keep moving forward and making sure that we have the funds we need to make a best operation and move on. So, you know, it's averaged out to $14 a month increase for the median household. And, you know, some people, that doesn't seem like a lot. To other people, it can be a significant amount. So just know that we, I myself, and I know that the other Commissioners feel it pretty much the same way, that when we have to raise rates like this, we do it with looking at all options and trying to make sure that our staff has sharpened their pencils in every way they can to try and make it as least impactful as possible.
Commissioners, I just wanted to make a note to thank you for your input along the way, first of all. But also specifically, I wanted to acknowledge probably as one, maybe one of the most proud moments I've had working with the board was when you decided that you had this big Lieberg decision, that you weren't going to push the financing decisions off to a future board, that you decided that this was something that you made a decision, you set a course. Now, all the courses were expensive, granted. But you owned the decision, and you directed staff to start that process under your tenure. And I just wanted to thank you for that, because it is so easy in today's society to make a decision that impacts somebody else indirectly or directly, and push off the difficult decision to somebody else. And so I just wanted to acknowledge you for that and thank you for that. I think that takes a lot of courage to do that. And it really makes me proud to work for you and represent you under those kinds of circumstances. And so, so thank you very much for that. I also just wanted to point out that we do have lots of tensions and pressures when it comes to affordability. We value that in the context of all of our values, and we know Commissioners do as well. It is important to note that year over year, next year's budget is actually lower than this year's budget. The reason that the rates are going up is that it's prudent financially to prepare and position the organization for some of these large upcoming investments. And we need to have and be in a good financial position to be able to leverage those necessities when they come our direction. And so some of that is we do have really strong budgetary controls, and we know that the Commissioners expect us to adhere to those. But we also want to position the utility and the organization going forward. So I wanted to thank staff for highlighting and daylighting that, but also thank Commissioners for your input along the way, especially related to the difficult decision around Lieberg. So thank you for that.
John Brown, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, I'm not able to use the raise hand function here, so I've been waving, but anyhow. Yeah, I just want a question of staff. I know several months ago, when we went over this, you had about an 8% rate increase. And then tell me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it 5.7? And now it's 6.3? Is that correct? Does that number come out? I mean, when we started this process, it was 8, and then it went down to, I think, 5.7. Now it's up to 6.3.
When we presented in July, we were looking at a 7.34% increase for the electric utility overall revenue requirement. And we sharpened those pencils, and we came back with 5.7% overall revenue requirement. The 6.3 that you're citing is the specific rate for residential customers. So then we take that and we plug it into our cost-of-service analysis framework. And so that is the rate that would, that is the revenue requirement we would be from that particular customer class.
Okay, so, well, I'm sorry, because that kind of confused me, because when you say electric rates are 8%, and then 5.7, and now 6.3, it kind of, I'm wondering why we're deviating so much. I guess it's a refinement process, but thank you. You just reaffirmed that I wasn't making stuff up in my head. So, thank you.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, Commissioner Brown, I think through the course of when we start to look at capital in July, we do some forecasting. That's what came out at roughly 7 and 3/4. We are still at 5.7 from an overall revenue requirement perspective. So that has not changed. The 6.3 is the portion of that that was allocated to residential. So you did see a 7 and 3/4 drop to 5.7 overall. Some of that is just when we start to look at the details, and when we go back to various divisions and departments, and try to balance the needs that we have versus the what we know is important to you and Commissioners around affordability, that in this case was dropped as we went through that process. But we are still at 5.7 from an overall revenue requirement. The 6.3 is just the portion of that that was allocated to residential.
Thank you.
And we will move on to item number 11, and we will pull this back up so we can do the hearing and do the vote after we have the public hearing.
President Carlson, can I just make, well, you can keep jumping up. I was just gonna note, you did receive one public feedback that if water goes up 6%, or water goes up 8%, and electric goes up 6%, that means it's going up 14%. That's actually not how percentages work. They're of different content. And so it would actually, because of the weight of it, would be more geared toward the electric side because of the size of that budget. So just, it's not going up 13% or 14%. It's not an additive kind of math in that case. I was just gonna point that out, so. And we'll respond accordingly to that.
6.3% on $42 versus 100.
Right, yeah.
Welcome, Jason.
Good evening. Glad I got here on time. For the record, I'm Jason Huser, Public Affairs, Public Policy and Government Affairs Director at EWEB. I'll be here this evening to unveil for you our 2024 legislative agenda. You'll recall that I was here in September, and I described the upcoming legislative session to be a classic short session that is very narrow in short in scope. That doesn't stop various interest groups from trying to pass bills, though. And as it happens, EWEB will actually be one of those entities in a little bit of a surprise. There's one item that I'll start with that we didn't talk about in September. Although it's not totally unknown to you, you'll probably recognize this from our 2023 legislative agenda. So it is a repeat item. The first topic in our legislative agenda is a legislative remedy for hydroelectric water rights conversions, and some of the ambiguity that's in the law as a result of a court case. So water rights in Oregon have to be put to beneficial use. If they're not for an extended period of time, the water right holder can face risk of conversion and forfeiture of that water right. A time-tested method for a hydroelectric facility that wasn't in operation for some period of time, for example, FERC directive ordering them not to generate. A way to toll the statute would be a temporary lease to use the water for another beneficial use. There was a Supreme Court case in 2021, right in Christmas of 2021, so people didn't quite take note of it for a couple of months. But that court case upended the status quo, and it essentially took the leasing tool off the table and creates ambiguity in the law. It did include a footnote, a very extended footnote that described an administrative alternative that a hydroelectric facility and water rights holder couldn't pursue to preserve their water right. And to that end, we have actually, EWEB has actually filed paperwork with the Oregon Water Resources Department to avail ourselves to that administrative option for Lieberg. We have every reason to believe that administrative alternative will be successful. However, in the wake of this court case and the ambiguity, there's an opportunity for the legislature to revisit the law and provide the clarity that I think would cause all of us to sleep a lot better at night. And so to that end, we have requested legislation be drafted. Certainly, it's incumbent upon your approval of the legislative agenda, we could certainly withdraw that request from the legislator that sponsored it for us. Because of the filing deadline, we did have to get some paperwork filed for this coming session. Our legislative remedy is, has two approaches. One is a very straightforward one, that we could create an exemption to water rights forfeiture for any hydroelectric facility that has been ordered by FERC not to generate for a period of time. That's the straightforward, simple approach. Plan B would be that the legislature explicitly codify the administrative alternative that was described by the Oregon Supreme Court. So that's our top priority for the session, and I consider this a two-for-one. We expect that the length and time for a decision to be made on this administrative alternative would allow us to pursue the same legislative remedy in the 2025 session if we were unsuccessful. And because this is a short session, it is a high degree of difficulty to get a bill passed in a very compressed time period. Moving along to the next topic, regional transmission organizations. We did talk about this in September. I believe I probably had it in the monitor category. We expected informational hearings and discussion about RTOs, which again, represent an overall trend away from bilateral market transactions and market functions towards this more centralized, multilateral, organized approach to markets and transmission planning. We thought there would just be hearings, but there's going to be a bill. And just the two elements of that bill that are concerning, as far as what we know is going to be in the bill. Number one, the bill would dictate criteria that EWEB would be required to consider and demonstrate before joining an RTO. We don't think that's appropriate. We feel that any determination on that criteria is best handled by this EWEB elected board in consultation with EWEB staff. It's not necessary to have a legislative mandate or directive. Secondly, this bill would require EWEB to report to the legislature on efforts to join an RTO or organized markets. First off, it's an unusual step to include EWEB in the scope of who would report. We are not a balancing authority in the Pacific Northwest. We do not have substantive long-distance electric transmission. It's very unusual. I don't know what exactly we would report. We're in the balancing authority of the Bonneville Power Administration. They're a federal entity. The state cannot compel them to do anything. So the request is odd in that regard. And even if there were some way for us to join an RTO, again, I'm not sure what that would mean, but I think it's unnecessary to report this formally. We're happy, I think, to send any EWEB subject matter expert from the top of the organization on down to me to talk to the legislature. We think it's great that they're engaged on this topic. But really, the formulation of organized markets or an RTO, these transcend the political boundaries of the state of Oregon. These are multi-state things. Again, the Bonneville Power Administration cannot be compelled to do anything, and they control probably 2/3 of the regional electric transmission. So we think it's great that the legislature is engaged. We hope they keep holding informational hearings, but legislation is not necessary at this time, in our view. That's our recommendation. And finally, one that really is just a monitor. There will be more informational hearings to discuss the large electric growth in Oregon that's resulting from the signing of data centers and crypto miners in Oregon. I'm very confident that will be informational only. The one thing that could happen is the legislature might make a recommendation to form a work group to come up with recommendations to the 2025 legislative session. And if so, I'm sure you would be happy to volunteer our services to serve on advisory group that would form. So that's the agenda, and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a question about the RTO topic. Who is behind that bill? Who, I mean, not specifically the legislator, but like, what group is behind that bill?
Great question, Commissioner. There's at least two legislators that I think I could say have put themselves on the record. One is Senator Kathleen Taylor from Portland, as well as Representative Mark Bamba from Milwaukee next to Portland. And I would say there is a group of interest, they care very deeply about climate change. They feel we're running out of time, that Oregon is going to be hard-pressed even just to meet our own regional adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals. And they believe that organized markets and regionalization are intrinsically important to the success of deep carbonization in the region. And that's probably true. And so I think the motivations come from a really good place, and I think we understand that, and we agree with the overall sentiment. It's just that I don't think there's anything Oregon can unilaterally do to help. It may inadvertently even be a little bit of a distraction if individual states start to insert themselves into these regional discussions. But I think that's the motivation for groups to bring this forward. And I think they can accomplish their goals without legislation like this. There's a big role, I think, for, truly, it sounds a little dismissive, but I don't know exactly the adjective to use. But I mean, there's definitely a role for the state legislature to advocate within the region, even through the Western Governors Association. I believe there is a Western State Legislature's Association or some kind of body of that sort. And those are organizations that can help be advocates for these regional solutions.
Are there any utilities that are probably supporting this?
You know, that's a good question. I might lean on Frank a little bit. I'll take a stab at it. I think most utilities acknowledge we can't reach the regional goals for decarbonization, reliability, and affordability. Somebody's going to give unless we come up with better tools than the toolkit we have today. And I think most people agree that this future of organized regional system, it makes sense. There's a strong value proposition. But I think also people would acknowledge if we rush into it headlong, there are things we could get wrong. And whether it's the memories of the Western power crisis 20 years ago, or just the idea that fairness matters too, and everyone's going to be affected differently by these regionalized approaches and markets. There are winners and losers, so to speak. Even society at large and the environment overall benefit. There's a lot of fairness issues to work through, and it takes the time that it takes to do that. There's a lot of signs that show we're making progress. We have a Western Regional Adequacy Program that's now in place. The Western Energy and Balance Market's in place, and a successor, Dayhead Market, is already on the table for consideration. So there's a variety of examples to show we are making steady progress. Everyone would love to get there sooner, but we're making steady progress, but it's also going to take the time it takes to get it right.
Yeah, just a quick question. Can you remind us who's introducing the legislation on the hydro rights?
Yes, locally using Representative Paul Holby has filed that legislation.
Here's on the RTO topic. Are the items that we're
Are the items that we're opposed to kind of essential parts of that idea or concept? Or if they, or could they be removed and then we might be supportive of it?
That's a good question. I would say the criteria part, I do think that's one that we materially would want to object to. I think it's really taking away the judgment of this board. And I don't think that's the right call. I think EWEB is best situated to make that call. To the extent where we actually have standing, again, you know, we're not a balancing authority. But I would answer that that's something that that criteria is definitely best determined by the EWEB board and not legislature.
Yeah, President Carlson, I would. The hard thing for us to understand is jurisdictional issues here. And the fact that we don't see any value to what's being proposed. Other than you could say that from an IOU perspective, they are actually regulated by state of Oregon. They have a different regulator than we do. Most utilities I know of are ultimately in favor of an organized market. And also an RTO for different reasons. Those are different things, by the way, when we talk about market. A regional transmission organization is the transmission portion. A market is actually how we, the mechanism for which we buy and sell electricity. We are not, you know, what a balancing authority is regulated is, is required by regulation to balance the inflows and the outflows within its assigned area. We are not a balancing authority. We operate on Bonneville along with a lot of other utilities. So the applicability and the value that we see here is, is difficult to see. Now, we, along with most utilities, have been supportive and think it's necessary to move toward both an RTO and an organized market. We think that's essential to leveraging the diversity of the region to meet all of our climate goals as well as a number, and most utilities say at this point, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. And most think it's within the next few years that that's going to move that direction. Pacific Corps already announced that they're going to join the California Dayhead Market. So usually when the big players in the region move, then a lot of the others follow on. So I think these are very valid questions. But the jurisdictional piece is just hard for us to get a grip around, especially because it's a regional issue. It's not a state issue.
Commissioner Brown? You're frozen.
I'm good. I don't, I don't have anything to say.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to check.
Thank you.
So. Frank, can you be able to help me understand this a little bit better? So if you're saying that most utilities are heading that direction towards an RTO and a other acronym that eludes me at this point. Do you see this legislation as people in Salem trying to jumpstart that process? Saying, hey, we want, we want you guys to go down this way and found somebody kicking us in the butt. It's not going to happen. Is that kind of what this legislation is trying to do? I mean, you say it's a regional thing and a lot of people are waiting, but somebody has to jump in first. You're saying that Pacific Source or Pacific Power was one of those jumping in first. Is it just, is this kind of a kickstart?
I actually don't see it as necessary, Commissioner Barossi. Not only is Pacific Corps doing it, there are a number of different proposals on the table, including a group of state regulators. Groups from the Oregon Public Utility Commission, along with a number of other states who are talking about second and third options for organized markets. I'm not exactly sure of the logic behind this. I'm not sure if Jason knows something that I don't. We were part of an organism, a group. I don't know what group I, what would you call that group? I was, Jason, that.
I was Senate Bill five thirty eight task force. The Oregon Legislature two thousand twenty one created a work group to develop a report to the legislature. It's a really good document, by the way. I'll make sure that it gets emailed out. Frank did a really nice job on the advisory board. That's what you're referring to, Frank.
Yeah, and, and we showed that there's benefit, both potentially financially as well as environmentally for this regional concept. The grid does not operate state by state. And so now some states such as Nevada have passed laws that require their investor-owned utilities, the ones that they regulate, to join an organized market by two thousand thirty. That would be an effort to kickstart something. This one, because it's reporting, it's criteria, it's difficult to actually see the value in it from my perspective. Jason may see value that I don't.
Yeah, I think I concur. I think the intent is to be supportive and truly or even jumpstart. But it won't, in reality, it will, it's not additive or have efficacy to the regional efforts. And then you have to worry, will inadvertently do some harm? And that's where the criteria is, makes us a little nervous. I believe the Colorado law, for example, and I think there was a law in Nevada as well of a similar. There's no kind of criteria. They just said you will join one. There's no criteria to consider or be satisfied. And, you know, in our situation, we're in Bonneville's balancing authority. Bonneville spans multiple states. Is Washington going to put criteria in? Would it be a shame if any individual utilities located within EPA's balancing authority were prohibited from participating because of these criteria that states put in when Bonneville decides to join and no one can tell Bonneville what to do? So I think it's one of those things where the legislature could be just as effective with their intent by holding these informational hearings and then they can do efficacy without legislation. That would be our, I think, our analysis.
Yeah, and I didn't have any problem with the, with the legislative intent that you're moving forward. I just wanted to get my mind around the issue.
We'll get you some of that feedback as, as well as kind of what we see across the region.
Thank you.
Follow up question. Do we ever, when you're opposing something like this, do you ever redirect and say, hey, we'd be supportive of something that just required us all to join an RTO by two thousand thirty? Or you just say no thanks and leave it at that?
That's a great question. I don't know what we would say. We probably need to huddle up as staff. I think the bottom line, there's one thing we're very confident is the legislature can help without legislation. And I think that's probably the safest recommendation we can make. Would another bill, another legislative approach be acceptable? I think we'd have to see what it looks like, see the language.
To answer your questions, so we have redirected on other things in the past. Without different, our position has been a little bit more nuanced or in favor of this because of this reason. So we have done that in the past.
Thanks.
This is an action item, so. Move on resolution two thousand three hundred and twenty six.
Who to adopt? Resolution number two thousand three hundred and twenty six?
McCray moves. Schlossberg seconds. Any other discussion? Say none. All those in favor of resolution two thousand three hundred and twenty six, Bridgeham, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously. Right. Thank you very much, Jason. Anything else?
Thank you. I'll just say we can always do EWEB lobby date at the Capitol. I'll, I'll be in touch with you all. I'll have Holly or Ian or both of them follow up with you about your availability to sometime in Salem. We don't want to rule out virtual option too, if it's difficult to calendar. So thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, so we are at six twenty nine. We're still ten minutes ahead of going to the public hearing. I see that the next item is the annual dam safety summary update and that's a thirty minute item. So I think we should go to that and we can revisit. Is it Laura? Or Almond? Sitting over there. Just look over there going, no, no.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lisa Krenz, Generation Manager. As a first order of business tonight, it is my sincere pleasure to introduce Laura Almond. She is our new Chief Dam Safety Engineer and Dam Safety Program Supervisor. Laura joined EWEB nearly fourteen years ago as an engineer in the Generation Division. And for most of that time has been working on the Carmen Smith Implementation Project Team. And through that work has gained a significant amount of experience in dam safety and program management. So we're absolutely thrilled to have Laura in this new position. Daniel Wong, who was our previous Chief Dam Safety Engineer, retired at the beginning of this year. So we had that position vacant for about six months before Laura joined. And so before I move on, I also wanted to express my sincere thanks to Mark Zinnaker, who was serving double duty as the Acting Chief Dam Safety Engineer in addition to his other roles. So, and I do believe Mark is joining us tonight remotely. Did he need to comment on anything? All right. So Laura and I will be providing an update on our dam safety program this evening. I will go over just real briefly our program in general. And then we'll spend most of the time talking about significant and notable dam safety issues at our hydroelectric projects and some projects that we've got coming up. As a brief reminder, EWEB owns three hydroelectric projects. Two of those are located in the Mackenzie River. It's a major oil field project, the Smith Project, you're learning them, you'll be familiar with them. Both of these projects contain facilities that are classified as high hazard by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And so they are subject to our dam safety program requirements. A brief reminder, EWEB also owns the Stone Creek Hydro Plant located on the Clackamas River. You don't hear a lot about this project. This one, there's not a lot of notable dam safety issues and two, it's not classified as high hazard. So we won't be focusing on Stone Creek tonight. Right, just a quick bit about our regulatory environment. So our regulator for dam safety is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission's Division of Dam Safety and Inspections. That's also called D two S I. We work very closely with the Portland Regional Office, but FERC's Washington DC Dam Safety Office is also highly engaged in many of our projects. There are multiple facets to the oversight of our dam safety program. First, the owner's dam safety program, you'll see that also called the ODSP. That is our FERC requirement. And it includes the owner, so EWEB in this case, to conduct inspections on daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly and an annual basis. Then in addition to that, FERC themselves also comes to the projects annually to do their own inspections. And then every five years, we're required to do and have an independent consultant come and do dam safety review, including an onsite inspection. You have seen contracts come through for those called Part twelve D inspections. Those are the required every five year inspections. And then we also have the requirement to do an independent audit of our owner's dam safety program every five years to identify areas for improvement. All right, so the, the current ODSP or the Owner's Dam Safety Program, it came out of a two thousand twelve FERC requirement that was really a result of a two thousand five dam failure at Tom Sock Dam. Now, our Owner's Dam Safety Program has evolved considerably over the last decade, most significantly as a result of the independent audit that was conducted in, in two thousand nineteen by the Association of State Dam Safety Officials. Out of that audit, we received a number of recommendations that included forming an independent dam safety department that was separate from the other generation groups. And we've more than doubled the FTE that is dedicated to supporting our dam safety program. Our current department consists of four full-time FTEs positioned in the engineering discipline. Laura. And then in addition to that, we have on the books plans to hire a regulatory specialist in two thousand twenty four, so early next year, to help manage and support some of the regulatory requirements and tracking that we have, which are significant for this program. The ODSP itself, as required by FERC, has a number of minimum, minimum requirements. Those include an organizational policy. The board approved an organizational policy a couple of years ago in the year of two thousand twenty two. We also have a requirement to have stated goals and objectives, stated responsibilities for staff at all levels of the organization, including line level staff and all the way up to management. We have a requirement to have a dam safety program for all EWEB staff that are engaged in the operation, maintenance of our hydroelectric facilities, including engineering and management. And then there are required internal and external communication protocols, reporting, data management, et cetera. And then finally, the, the program also requires that we have an eye towards continuous improvement to continually, yeah, where we can do better from a dam safety perspective. That might look like things like staffing and organizational structure, continuing to develop dam safety expertise, and then striving ultimately to be more proactive rather than reactive when it comes to dam safety issues. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Laura to talk about some of our specific projects.
Okay, great. Thanks, Lisa. Good evening, Commissioners. We're going to start with the Carmen Smith Project. That is, it consists of three dams, three reservoirs, two powerhouses. Re-regulates the Mackenzie River at the Trailbridge Powerhouse, which is at the bottom of the screen there. Slide. And we're going to start with the Board of Consultants. So you might have seen the contracts come through. What is it? Why do we have one for Carmen Smith? A Board of Consultants is a team of four independent consultants who are experts in the field of dam safety. They review infrastructure designs such as fish passage and dam safety improvements. Assembling a board of consultants for the Carmen Smith Project was a FERC requirement given to us in July two thousand twenty one, which was shortly after the discovery of the sinkholes at Trailbridge. We identified the members and contracted by November of two thousand twenty one. Since then, we've had two meetings per year for a total of four meetings. Each meeting has, is three days in duration and requires several weeks of preparation ahead of the meeting and also follow up after the meeting. Each meeting is an opportunity to discuss dam safety topics in depth and attendees include EWEB staff, consultants, FERC staff and Board of Consultants. The advantages to this process is that this process allows for dam safety experts to review our project designs and provide guidance and on additional studies and considerations related to dam safety. The VOC meetings also provide an opportunity to work with FERC staff. FERC staff get earlier and more frequent review of project designs or investigations. And these meetings allow for FERC input and greater familiarity with the projects and with the designs. Because of having more opportunities to review and discuss the project and proposed items, this process potentially helps to facilitate FERC's review and approval of design documents, which is required prior to the start of any dam safety related project. Next slide. Trailbridge Sinkhole Investigation. We discovered sinkholes in Trailbridge Reservoir in May of two thousand twenty one. Upon discovery, we immediately started an investigation. We implemented risk reduction measures such as lowering the reservoir operation level and increased surveillance and monitoring. Next slide. In support of the sinkhole investigation, a geotechnical drilling program was initiated. Started in two thousand two, finished it in two thousand twenty three. This work included installation of additional monitoring instruments and equipment, which provides us with real time data. And the results of this geotechnical drilling have been drafted and were a primary topic in our most recent VOC meeting. So after preliminary review and discussion with the EWEB, our consultants, the Board of Consultants and FERC, the preliminary finding is that the sinkholes are unlikely to progress in a way that will cause failure of the dam. So what we think is happening is that the site geology and the sinkholes are providing a path for water to travel under the dam. But we believe that the water is not picking up soil particles from the dam and allowing them to travel. Therefore, the structural integrity of the dam is likely not being impacted. However, we do need to continue to monitor this condition and to ensure that this is the case. And we also need to confirm other possible scenarios are not likely to occur. And so again, these results are preliminary. More work is needed to boost our confidence in these findings and to verify what risks we do have at Trailbridge and what can be done to mitigate those risks. This includes work. We will continue to work with the Board of Consultants and with FERC to get concurrence and also to answer any questions related to this. Next slide. So next steps. The sinkhole investigation will be finalized and submitted to FERC for formal review in the first half of 2024. This will be followed by development of remediation designs as applicable. Early discussions of remediation include a solution which plugs the sinkholes. However, discussions concept at our VOC meeting raised concerns whether this would lead to new sinkholes in other locations. So therefore, potential concepts will be thoroughly developed by our consultant. And then they will be discussed with the VOC and FERC prior to determining the path forward. Another outstanding question is, what is the impact of the sinkholes have on the proposed trap and hall facility, which is part of the upstream fish passage requirement of the FERC license? Early concepts there include a robust seepage and monitoring system within the trap and hall design. And this would allow us to monitor and identify if there's a change in the dam that needs intervention. These concepts will again, will be thoroughly developed and presented to the Board of Consultants and FERC for concurrence. Seismic hazardous analysis update. This is applicable to both projects, the Carmen Smith Project and the Leiberg-Walterville Project. EWEB has submitted updated site-specific seismic hazard analysis report to FERC in November of 2022. We received initial FERC comments from FERC in October of 2023. And we're currently working with our consultants to respond to those comments. I do anticipate updates to the report will be necessary. And therefore, the timing of FERC's final approval is uncertain at this time. Once we do have final approval, the resulting design criteria will have an impact on designs at both Carmen Smith and Leiberg-Walterville. And therefore, this item is critical path to much of our improvement work at both projects. Even next slide. The Leiberg Canal has been shut down for power generation since 2018. It does still serve as stormwater conveyance, specifically Cogswell and Johnson Creeks. As such, it is important to provide a low-level outlet for those flows in order to keep the water level low in the canal. We have a project in place to create a low-level outlet by removing a runner in the powerhouse. Next slide. There's a couple of photos of the work here. The contractor mobilized on, excuse me, November 20th. And work is expected to progress rapidly now with substantial completion by the end of the year. Next slide. At Walterville, we are doing stability analyses. That's in progress for the high-hazard canal sections, and that does include the four bay. In order to evaluate the stability, a geotech drilling program was completed in March of 2023. Those results were compiled and sent to FERC in October of 2023. And the next steps there is that the consultant will be providing interpretation, recommendations, and incorporating those into the stability analysis. Next slide. Walterville Four Bay, there is a seep located at the Walterville Four Bay, which we are actively monitoring. We collect and evaluate the seepage data in real time and have had success managing the seep to acceptable levels by managing the four bay water level. And the geotech investigations that I just mentioned will help us evaluate this issue. Next slide. As Lisa mentioned, FERC inspects our hydroelectric projects annually. This year, we performed a FERC annual inspection at Leiberg-Walterville in September. And we completed our Part 12D periodic inspection with an independent consultant at Carmen Smith in November. That was rescheduled from September due to the lookout fire. Next slide. So upcoming work, we will continue to work on our ODSP. We are providing an update to FERC on that document by the end of the year. In 2024, our emergency action plan functional exercise will be scheduled. And that's where we work with local emergency managers to test the functionality of our emergency action plan. And then at Carmen Smith, we'll continue to work on the Trail Bridge Sinkhole Investigation, as I mentioned. We also are working on the Smith Spillway Expansion and Flow Release Structure Project that's approaching a 60% design. We have scheduled a spillway inspection at the Carmen diversion spillway. And then next slide, oh, same slide, sorry. At Leiberg-Walterville, we'll proceed with the geotech drilling at Leiberg Canal. That's in support of the Leiberg decommissioning action plan. That is pending FERC approval at this time. And we will continue evaluation of the geotech data at Walterville in support of the stability analysis that I mentioned earlier. A lot of work coming up, and back to you, Lisa.
Thank you, Laura. So the evening would not be complete if we didn't discuss some of the many challenges that our program is facing and will continue to face. The regulatory environment, as you all know, has changed dramatically over the last, particularly the last five years, but started prior to that, in large part due to the industry's advancing knowledge of what seismic breaks actually looks like. So for example, at Carmen Smith, there is a fault up there that we did not know existed a handful of years ago. So, you know, as we know more, the challenges grow larger. There's also been some notable dam failures across the country. And that's all coupled with a time when infrastructure is aging. Many of the dams have been, you know, Carmen was built, you know, 50-plus years ago, right? And Leiberg and Waltville much, much before that. So it's a perfect storm, as you will. And all of it has resulted in increased scrutiny and focus on dam safety and more stringent regulatory requirements. And we expect that trend to continue over time. The increase in the workload industry has been industry-wide. So EWEB is not the only entity that's facing sort of this, you know, balloon of dam safety-related work. That has resulted in a significant labor shortage that impacts everyone. It's impacted EWEB, it impacts FERC, it impacts the consultants that we work with. And that's also happening at a time when many dam safety professionals are at the end of their careers and are retiring. So I guess all of this to say, I'm trying to put a plug out there for folks who want career opportunities and stability to get into the dam safety field. It's a great time to do it. So, anyway, this results in just significant challenges, increased costs, schedule, and urgencies and constraints that really have impacted EWEB and will continue to. As you know, for example, we have many license requirements at our Carmen Smith Project that are delayed primarily due to dam safety reasons. And we find ourselves in a situation where the required schedule for our licensed required projects is in direct conflict with our dam safety requirements. And we're doing our best to navigate through these issues, but it has been and will continue to be a challenge over time. And I'd hate to end on a sour note, but that's the last slide for the formal presentation. And we move to questions and discussion.
You can end on a really good note and save, you know, a while to Laura.
And now we have Laura.
She's going to solve one of our problems.
We have Laura, but we have, you know, we have a full team now of some really incredible folks who are doing great work. And so I feel like we are set up for success. Yeah, so that's good. I like to end on a high note.
You know, I saw an announcement, one of the communications about congratulations and congratulations to Mark for not having to do double duty anymore. Thank you. Okay. Any questions then? Commissioner Brown, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. A question and a comment. Lisa, didn't we have sinkholes in either Carmen or Smith that emerged several years ago? And if so, what did we do about that?
Yeah, we, so there are sinkholes in Carmen diversion reservoir. Those were discovered a number of years prior to the Trail Bridge reservoir sinkholes. They don't have, Laura or Mark can give an update. They don't have the same sort of public safety risk or concern that those at Trail Bridge reservoir do. So, you know, we have been prioritizing Trail Bridge. But Laura, do you want to give a brief update on the Carmen diversion sinkholes or defer to Mark?
Yeah. Yeah, basically what we did there is we are monitoring by doing frequent bathymetry surveys. And we've brought the water surface elevation in that reservoir down. We've also closed it to the public due to public safety reasons while we're investigating. And it doesn't change our operation, actually. And so therefore, our proposal to FERC is that we could leave it as at lower water elevations. The geology in that area was known when they built the project. So this isn't, we were able to see that this has been known since the beginning. It's just that they have, they are changing. And so therefore, we are monitoring and have to pay careful attention to make sure that we're on top of the public safety aspect of it.
And my comment is, at what point, if there is a point, does this board look into the financial feasibility of continuing operations? Because it seems like we're putting a new wooden leg on a 90-year-old guy. This thing is going to kill us death by a thousand cuts. Because not only do we have a dam safety regulation, then we have compliance with fish and all these other things, and we've got all this really aging infrastructure. And to me, it's starting to paint a picture. We may want to look at a, you know, financial feasibility of continuing to operate these versus not. Because it's not going to get any easier, it's not going to get any less expensive. And, you know, if we're going, I mean, if we could buy all our power from Bonneville, like Lane or some does, it seems like that's a lot less, it's a more cost-effective way to do business. I don't know if others have that same concern, but I think that it looks like we're on the path of very, very expensive resources.
Can I just comment real quickly on that? It's a fair question, Commissioner Brown. And, you know, we are updating our financial analysis for the Carmen Smith Project. And, you know, costs have increased over time. That's just one piece of the picture, though. Anytime you look at a resource, you also have to look at what the alternative is. And so, you know, we do plan to be working with our power planning group and finance group. They have already started looking into those questions to see not only what is the current financial estimate for Carmen Smith, but what is the alternative? Should we choose to do something different? And I think that will be enlightening.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Brown, I would just add that we also have to have that discussion in the context of our resources at large. Carmen Smith, for example, bringing certain attributes to our resource portfolio is important. But we have to have that conversation in the context of all of our resources and all of our values and how we're going to balance those. I do think it's appropriate for this board to take a look at that at some time in the next year or so. And I have talked to power planning and some others about how we would want to tee up some kind of discussion around that. So we should expect to have some broader conversation around that issue within the next year.
Thank you.
I have one, two or three questions here. First one is, when is the next five-year audit scheduled for?
Next year or the year after?
Yep, it's 2024, due in early 25, I believe.
Okay. You also mentioned the fact that there is a hierarchy of responsibility that goes throughout the organization. What responsibility do we have as far as board members?
Yeah, well, you're fulfilling one of your responsibilities tonight by listening to an annual update on our dam safety program. And we will be doing this every year. You know, one of your responsibilities is to stay, you know, open and apprised of major issues, which we do over time, and then provide governance to the organization as a whole. If you would like to see more details on the roles and responsibilities, happy to send that to you. Our organ dam, our owner's dam safety program document itself is classified as critical energy infrastructure. So that's why we did not provide it as part of this correspondence, but we certainly can under a separate cover.
That's great. I think this is a important part of our duty here as board members. I don't know if yearly is sufficient, especially with some of the issues that you've identified. It used to be that at least a memo or a correspondence more often than once a year would be appropriate. I don't know if the other board members agree with that, but for me, these are important issues. The last question that I have is, with the recommendations on Trail Bridge, you kind of figured it out. Does that mean we're going to be able to refill Trail Bridge? And what effect does the lowering of the level of Trail Bridge have on the generation?
So, you know, I don't know how to answer that quite yet. You know, Mark might have.
He might, and I, so I can take a stab at the operational issue. So keeping the reservoir elevation of Trail Bridge lower as we have been since the sinkholes were discovered does change operations for a portion of the year when it's overlapping with the time that we also have minimum reservoir elevation requirements for bull trout passage into Sweetwater Creek. So we have a time period from, I think it's August 15th to October 31st, might be off by a week or two there, where it really does limit, you know, we basically are trying to maintain a flat reservoir, which is operationally difficult to do. And our trading floor has done an exceptional job at that. So, and Mark can chime in if he's got anything else to add. We don't anticipate the ability to raise reservoir elevation anytime soon. There's still a lot more to work through on what the impact of the sinkholes are and what remediation might look like. One theory is that the reduction in elevation of the reservoir has actually helped keep the sinkholes from progressing because it has taken some of the pressure off, which was the point of reducing reservoir elevation. So, Mark, anything you want to add on that if you're on the phone?
Sure, just a couple of elaborations. Those were great responses. The, that period of time during August 15th to October 31st, when we do have to operate the reservoir at a uniform, steady level, impacts our ability to peak with the Carmen Power Plant. So that has been a pretty significant operational disruption associated with the sinkholes. We did field from the Board of Consultants during our October meeting openness to considering changes in our operating level. The current limit of 2083 is seven feet below where we formerly had the maximum. And even gaining a couple of feet of operational flexibility would ease a lot of our operational constraints and allow us to resume some of the peaking production that we could do during that fish condition. But that would need to go through a board of consultants' careful review process before we made any changes to the current restrictions.
Commissioner Brown, I was going to add, at the Carmen Project, water management is the constraining piece to this, not the size of the generators. And so that particular elevation curtails our ability to ramp up and ramp down at peak times during the day versus more of a steady-state condition. So it attenuates our ability to do that. The generating capacity is higher than that. So it's this water management that's the limiting factor. But I think we're working that into all of our financial analysis and other things as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few, thank you. I'm curious, is the managing the dams with the advice of a board of consultants, is that a requirement? Is that something that we're?
So at first, actually, Daniel Wang, the previous chief dam safety engineer, was considering it as an optional tool because of the complexities of the project and because of the fish passage designs forthcoming. But then FERC did make it a requirement a couple of months after starting to think through this process. So it is a requirement that FERC gave to us in July of 2021, that we worked through this process. So it's very prescribed process of how we interact with the board and whose participation is. participation is is present and things like that.
Thanks, that's helpful. It seems like, I'm sure it's cumbersome, just because there's so many parties involved, but also seems, given the stakes, it seems like a really valuable asset to be working with so many experts. I'm curious, I think I read there that the approval of the seismic evaluation is crucial to FERC, that he only has to continue the license at Carmen Smith. Do you know when we'll get that approval from them?
We don't. So right now, we just received, a month ago, we received their their first initial comments. And so we're responding to those right now. And so what will happen is we'll respond to those comments, and then they may come back with additional. And so we'll go back and forth until their questions are exhausted and addressed. And then we'll finalize that report and, excuse me, the the report is finalized. But if there's any updates that need to be made, that those will be made, and then FERC will make their final approval of that document.
Okay. But given the questions they've given us, there's no concerns that they're going to say, ah, you're going to have to shut down this project?
No, the seismic hazard analysis isn't, we're not concerned about it causing a shutdown of our project. What it does is significantly impact the designs of all the infrastructure for fish passage and other improvements. And without knowing what that seismic criteria is needs to be, you can't move forward with designing it.
Sense. So I also wanted to comment on that. I understand the complexities between fish passage and seismic issues and sinkholes and all the deal, the issues we're dealing with at Carmen Smith. And I just want to say, thank you for the materials that help us understand those better. And I appreciate all the work that the team is doing to manage all of that. And while that was a compelling recruitment to join a dam safety team, I think I'm going to stay.
Gosh, a failure right there.
I know, I'm sorry. And then I'm just going to agree with Borowski, though I think a communication once, more than once a year is appropriate. But I also think we're getting that, right? I think we've had a couple of written communications updating us on dam safety. I think that should continue.
You know, one of the things we we, you know, we're happy to do whatever works best for the board. You know, we have been providing dam safety updates related to Leberg through the entire Leberg process. We can continue to provide more additional Carmen Smith updates, you know, when anything notable happens, or, you know, whatever frequency you'd prefer. But we won't let something happen that's notable without you finding out about it.
Having to be anxious about it, too? Thanks.
One thing that that we are evaluating along those lines is is the quarterly reporting that we do now is is sort of massive. And there's just a lot of stuff there. And Rod and I are talking with staff about how we refine that into certain things that are are more meaningful to the board, which could include things like this. So we do quarterly updates on these issues, but it's lost in the sea of stuff that we do relative to just standard operations. And so looking at ways to highlight things that are important on a quarterly basis seems like it it would be more relevant, more useful to the board than to just bombard you with an 80-page report of stuff. Now, I'm not saying that, I mean, everything in there is important in some way, but we also need to be able to highlight the things that are important, either through separate memos, attachments, reports, or through the quarterly reporting process. And we're having some of those discussions right now.
What will you question? How will all this new data that you got on Trail Bridge affect the opening of the campgrounds and access to Smith River reservoir?
I don't, well, I'm just off the top of my head saying, I don't think it should impact it at all.
I don't think so either.
Yeah.
So those are still scheduled for 25?
Oh, I'd have to double-check that date, but that sounds right.
Yeah.
Big fish in the.
All right, well, thank you both very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you. I will not be joining the team anytime soon. I appreciate that you're people here who teach knowledge, know-how, that we can trust to take care of it and do it, and for Mark and me both. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's a great opportunity. You're missing out.
And I can do it with that. I can start the business for dam safety.
Transformer?
Transformers.
There you go.
Okay. All right, well, we are now at 7:05. Have we had anybody come in? Okay, so let's open the public comment period for proposed budgets and close the proposed, the public hearing on proposed budgets and prices. And then we will move to item number 10, which is resolutions.
Resolutions, 2323, 2324, and 2325.
Um, can we do, are there any objections to that? Okay, we're good. Okay. No objections. Do we have a second? Motion moved by Borowski and seconded by Schlossberg. Any discussion? I just want to echo Borowski's comments from earlier that, you know, this, for me, is only the second time, I think, that we've had to raise rates. And we actually were fortunate enough to lower rates during one of the some years that I've been here. So this is definitely something that we do not take lightly and respect to customers and appreciate that it's the right thing to do. So appreciate us going through this process and being on this board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Asks unanimously. Thank you. And now, we're still a little bit ahead of schedule, but I'm wondering if if we want to take the break? Okay, yes, we'll take a 10-minute break. We'll come back at 7:17. Need to head back.
I think you do.
Order. And our item up is the 2024 organizational goal development. Right?
Well, President Carlson, Commissioners, good evening. Just wanted to start off, Greg. This is more of a work session type format. So our objective here is to try to tease out from you what you think the priorities should be for 2024. There's a few just questions to think about relative to things that you might see either operationally or aspects of the strategic plan, excuse me, the strategic plan that you would like to see develop further. Issues or concerns or opportunities that you see could be driven either internally or externally, of which you would like us to consider. Our process here is a little bit different than last year. Last year, I think we approached the board in December with some specifically stated goals. And you helped us to modify those, kind of tweak those a little bit, did some wordsmithing. This year, we'd like to understand a little bit more from a theme perspective, from a priorities perspective. And then we'll take your your input and ideas and thoughts and try to craft those into measurable objectives for 2024 and present those next month. Where we are and how this process works on an annual basis is we have a number of different forms of feedback that we rely on. The board is one of them. We also look at our own observations and measurements for our continuing operations. We do want to continue to maintain and improve our operations, as well as we have worked with the board over the past number of years on the strategic plan and some of the key initiatives and projects related to the strategic plan. And we'll talk about some of those a little bit later in the presentation here. The typically what we come out of on the other side of this, when we talk about stated goals, is there's usually a few different types of of goals that we create. One of them is, some of them have to do with sort of perennial requirements. In other words, we want to keep the business on track. What are the things that we do or want to emphasize to keep on track? There's certain things that relate to our own ongoing 24/7, 3- There's certain things that relate to our own ongoing 24/7, 365 operations. Sometimes we have cultural objectives that might fall into that category as well. These are things that you kind of see repeat over and over again. Part of the concept there is that you really want to make sure that your own operations are, are good enough and, and allow you then the opportunity to pursue strategic opportunities. And so it's really hard to be strategic if your daily operations are falling off the rails is kind of the, the concept and, and philosophy there. Sometimes we will also have just a discrete goal, which has to do with either an opportunity we see or a weakness that we would like to, to improve on. Some of those can kind of come and go, as well as the strategic milestones. Some of those, as you accomplish those, those tend to move on or off, but are part of a, a longer term theme, if you want to call it that. We do have some areas that we would identify as, as themes that I think the commissioners are aware of because of your work on the strategic plan. In that concept, we do have really three primary business priorities. One of them is business continuity. This is really, and there's some contingencies here, compliant with regulatory, the regulatory environment statutes, policies, policies that the board has placed on, on us. You tell us how to run our, our organization based on the policies that you create. And then within that environment, our ongoing operations need to maintain and improve their performance as, as we go forward. The other two are the two big ones that have been identified in the strategic plan. One, we just refer to as energy delivery optimization. Sometimes we refer to the synchronizing of supply and demand. The thought there is over time, the better we align consumption with supply, the more value we're going to add to our community, the more affordable we're going to be, the more efficient and reliable we're going to be from an energy delivery perspective. And then the third one is resiliency. And this, consistent with the policy that you passed last year, is how we can reduce the likelihood, the magnitude and the duration of either slow moving, sudden, sudden issues such as a ice storm or an earthquake. How do we prepare for that at the same time, dealing with longer term issues such as climate change and be resilient under a number of different threats that, that we have to be able to respond to as we go forward? Pandemic was not the first on our list, but it was the first to appear in front of us that we had to navigate. Quick reminder as to the strategic plan, there, none of these phases actually go away. We started with a lot of work around trying to facilitate customer confidence. I would, I would actually supplement that by saying board confidence and staff confidence is part of that as well. That was through really our performance on a day to day basis, as well as looking at opportunities to improve that we thought were impactful. We are now in the second phase of our strategic plan, which is really putting together the, the nuts and bolts, the bits and pieces relative to both resiliency, as well as that energy delivery optimization. The expanded list, we called it the mid game, but really the, and you can see they're building the foundational pieces. There were a number of different elements to that. Those really occurring over a number of years. Not all of those are things that you would expect to see in a particular year, but those can come and go over a number of years as we progress through the strategy and, in particular, through building of the pieces to allow us to be A, more resilient and B, work on the, the energy delivery optimization piece. This was really when we kind of sat down as staff and started to think about what we saw were some of our priorities. This is how we laid it out. And you can see along the, the right side there, which category, whether business continuity, energy optimization or resiliency, these various themes occurred in. The EES project is, is really foundational to the utility, not just relative to, oh, it's a new customer system or a new financial system. It also is significant from a cultural impact perspective, being able to have the flexibility to be able to advance our technology, not just through a big project once every 20 years, but how do we get into more of a continuous improvement mode in that kind of, of environment? You do see major capital projects across these areas. Those, those tend to focus on one or the other as opposed to EES, which is impactful all across the, the, the business priorities. Rate design is a key piece of, of both the resiliency as well as, as, sorry, business continuity, as well as the energy optimization. And you can see there's a number of these that we viewed as priorities in the organization. I think these were listed in your background materials as well. One of the things I will point out, our compliance obligations are increasing dramatically. And this next year, we'll have some significant compliance obligations that we have to meet as an organization. Some of them, you know, just even the last conversations around dam safety and the FERC requirements. We do have Oregon Public Utility Commission requirements within our distribution system. This next year, we will have an onsite NERC audit, which is a significant event for the utility as cursed five years was the last one we had, Rod. Every five years, it's an audit of things such as our processes to set and calibrate our safety equipment on our distribution system. For example, this is an electric compliance obligation. Oregon Health Authority, you know about. I also put the WMP, which stands for water master planning. That's a statutory obligation that we have to fulfill every 10 years. And that's due in 2025, so significant amount of work goes into that in 2024. So the compliance obligations we have just as an organization facing us in 2024 are pretty substantial. Just, and, and have to be a priority for us from a ongoing operational perspective. Some of those also relate to our strategic work, but just from a business continuity perspective, being able to run the organization and be compliant and, and, and legal and be, meet our regulatory obligations is pretty significant for us. And then there's a few, you know, we, we do have some new board policies. Finding ways to implement those in our daily operations is important. That's, that's why you've created them. I think when we had those discussions, we said that we would talk about how we demonstrate those. And so that's in response to priorities that we see and consistent, hopefully with, with what you see as priorities. And then finally, there were a number of actions that came out of the integrated resource planning process. Not all of those go into 2024, but some of them do go into 2024 and, and we'll cipher those out. And so this was really an opportunity to maybe tease your brains a little bit on some of the things that we were seeing, hopefully trying to extract some of either things that you feel strongly, you're consistently supportive of or, or see, or else identify some, some gaps from your perspective or things that, that you may see that you would like to, to identify as priorities that maybe we have not. So with that, I'm, I'm going to kind of turn it back to you, President Carlson, with returning to the original slide, which is we're looking for feedback from commissioners as to what you see as priorities as we go into this next year. Either things that you see as opportunities or things that you see as gaps or, or want to have discussion with, with us or with each other about. And these were questions just listed to kind of inspire some thought, but really this is, this is a work session. And so President Carlson, I'll, I'll turn it back to you and be happy to discuss or, or listen, either way. Thank you.
More than.
And if we don't get any feedback, we're just going to run with what we think we want and you will come back next month and you'll, you'll get a chance to go after it then.
Thanks. You know, I think that you've identified a lot of the things that you see internally. For me, one of the things that jumps out, meeting after meeting after meeting is workforce. And the fact, you know, we heard it tonight, dam safety. We need, we need more people on dam safety. You just listed off all the compliance things. We hear that the, the meter shop is, is low on things. We're blindly and slow on things. So for me, making sure that we have the bodies in the building to do this work is something that I keep hearing over and over and over again. And I know it's a struggle, but I think for me, that's one of the areas that is, you know, it's a perennial, it's one of the perennial ones. But how can we, is there a better way to do this? Are we, are we competitive in these areas? But whether that's wages, benefits, remote work, whatever, looking at, looking at all of that, those areas to say, how can we get the bodies that we need to do the work that needs to be done? Because it, almost in every presentation we hear, we hear that that is one of the challenges that, that our, our staff are, are bumping up against. So for me, that would be something to look forward to as a, as something to identify. And I don't, you know, you said identify track and, and see if there's ways for improvement. So for me, that, that's the one that just jumps out to me from sitting in a meeting once a month and hearing this, whereas you guys hear it all day, every day. But if there's a way to look at it and, and measure it and see if we are doing the best we can to get the people to do the work.
Building off of that, I'm, I am curious, the LCC building that's going in and school, that help get other students to us? I mean, it, it has a component of, I believe, but you know.
Potentially, I think the first step to Mr. Barofsky's comments is that getting a, a good assessment of both the labor market as well as the internal need is something that actually we're in process. Rod has been working with, with Lena on a, and her staff on a more detailed assessment of, in particular of our hard to fill positions. It may provide an opportunity or it may be a requirement as we go forward. We have to develop talent in some ways as opposed to acquire talent. Those are, those are two things as you realize. And there may be opportunities to work with an LCC or other potential partners on that. The first step, I think, is, is to address what Mr. Barofsky, which is to kind of, I'll, I'll call it the gap analysis, but really look at more detail and segment this into, into chunks that we can make, feel like we can make progress on. Because I think it does tend to be a bit of a perennial issue. So it, it could potentially. And I think we'll be, based on what I'm hearing from Rod and, and Lena, our chief workforce officer, is there's, we'll likely be in a better position to develop some goal around that between now and, and January. So you're going to say yes, so.
Outside of that, I mean, when, when I think about the goals and I look at where we're at in our strategic plan, for me, it feels like we set up this plan, we're marching down the plan and we have a number of very large projects in place and in play that we kind of need to keep following and doing the things that we've been doing. We don't have anything really new to add to it. It's really, you know, continuing to look at, okay, we made this decision on Labor Day. How are we doing? You know, we noted to implement the, the customer service system. And, you know, with that, the, the smart meter implementation is really more for me kind of a look back at somewhat of what Mr. Brown was mentioning earlier and looking back at the effectiveness of our decisions and where we're at with them and what it will still take to move it forward or is, is it still the right direction? I think it is. But we're kind of midway through that plan on a lot of projects and they still the right projects. And I mean, that's what sticks out to me. I would also say we are, in terms of the business priorities, I noticed a distinct lack of water in there and maybe there was a reasoning around that, but we still have just electricity. We also have water and thinking about that as nature portion of what we do. And we have very many projects that relate to it in terms of our storage projects and such. Me, that's what I think of as looking at the goals.
My masters will be very happy with that, that comment. Our water manager, she's smiling away. As well as the, now, resiliency is, is water as well as electric and business continuity is also a really, there's a lot of aspects related to the water in that. It, it doesn't have the market transformation that the energy division has relative to just an entire C chain shift in, in the market. But it's definitely, our intent was the business continuity as well as the resiliency business priorities. Can I just comment one more thing? I, I do think that the strategic pieces that come and go, for example, AMI, we need to, to finish that out. There's some things that were in, in midstream and one of, there's a couple of, one in particular is something we really haven't addressed. It's an important strategic piece, so it's just the rate design piece. That's, that's one that's likely going to take a plan and then a number of years to develop. So that's very strategic. There's portions of it that could be in one year and maybe that's the laying out of the process to, to do that. And then the, there's a, a non-strategic one that I think was on the list, which had to do with the fact that our operating environment includes both the Investment Reduction Act as well as the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which is a, a look at alternative financing and what opportunities that we can leverage there relative, things that also align with, with our strategy. So are there opportunities here that are created by an external environment, but still align with our strategy and putting together a, a bit of a more formal process to be able to evaluate and execute on those opportunities? And that was something I think was listed in there. That's something that's new and hasn't been in our strategy, driven by an external condition.
Are we at a place now, my, my, my recollection, we talked about smart meter implementation and the CS system is that both of those needed to be pretty much in place before we really address the rate design. Is that accurate or are there some places where we overlap that we could start that work?
Well, they, those are, are necessary components to be able to execute changes in rate design. The actual design of the rates should start sooner rather than later, even, even without those.
All right. Um, I, I think that I like it when you suggest what the, what the priorities and things should be, just because you are running the organization and, and you have the bigger picture. And there are certainly things that jump out at me that are of more interest, but I don't know that I should be the one specifically saying that maybe they should shift and go in this direction. But I agree with Sonia that we're kind of, we're, we're in a place where in the past few years, we've done a lot of work proving things or, or voting on things and like setting things in motion. And right now, we're kind of like in that motion. So it doesn't seem like a year to come up with the new priorities or, or new things because we still are really working on the things that we've just implemented in the past couple of years. But the one that really stands out for me is rate design, like you've just said. I think that there's so many reasons. I think tonight we just go into increase our rate. there's so many reasons. I mean, tonight, we just go into increase our rates. We talk about wanting more conservation, like all the things where it comes together. I feel like rate design to so many things. And I think that should be a huge priority for us. And then in terms of the other things, I guess I I trust your leadership to suggest to us where you think it should be.
Both my things that you're interested in, yeah.
Along the way.
I'm interested in the other things, but you know, some things are just of more interest than others. And so I don't want to say like, yes, we should do these three things because these three, you know, don't make me catch my interest. They're all important.
I I I think it's a great observation that that you made and President Carlson made. We are in the middle of a strategy. We're we're in fact, right in the middle of the strategy. It was a 10 year strategy and we're five years through it. So the the fact that there's certain things that are in motion that we need to see through, some things are kind of coming and going within that environment, I I think is is a great observation. Some things will continue because the work is continuing, maybe with different milestones. Other things will say, great, we're we're done with that one. Now that builds on onto something. And then there's some things that that may emerge. We also, in the context of strategy, want to make sure that things aren't emerging that will distract from our strategy from an operational perspective. We we have a really important role in the community that's a 24/7, 365 kind of obligation to keep the lights on, the water flowing, the information flowing, the response to customers, the money flowing. The flow is important on a day to day basis. Doing that well gives us the right to do these strategic things that we're in the middle of. So while our goals want to recognize the fact that we're progressing through a strategy, we also want to make sure that we're dealing with these perennial issues and workforce being one of them, that will not ultimately change our ability to pursue or position ourselves strategically. So it's it's a balance that we're going to have to look at. And then there's some things that have to do with everything. And and that's why I wanted to call out the the EES project. It's essential to daily operations. At the same time, it positions us for our strategic endeavors. So that's that's one where it's that's why really foundational and it's important. So it's it's a balance that we have to look at.
And I have one more thing, which is more of a question and not necessarily a organizational priority. But it's the question of what is the future of midsize utility? You know, we just voted to decommission Lieberg. Tonight, we talked about Carmen Smith and how expensive it is and what the issues are around that. We have our IRP discussions ongoing and just the nature of things changing. I just, I don't know how this becomes priority or whatever, but when do we address that issue or have a discussion about that issue in general? And how do we use that information to inform many of the decisions decisions that we are going to be making?
It's a very fundamental decision or or I'll say decision, it's it's a path that that I do think needs to be evaluated. I know that within the organization, we started to think about how we would, I'll call it a business model decision, how we would frame up the elements to be able to evaluate our business model going forward. There are trade offs between and on both the water side and the electric side. We are completely vertically integrated utility. We we have the the sources, we have transmission, we have distribution, we have customer relationships, so we're completely vertically integrated. Does that make sense going forward based on what we see the future to be? And what are the components that we need to identify to evaluate that? And I'm just gonna, in my notes, call that the business model evaluation. But it's certainly on our mind. And if it's on commissioners' minds, I think we'll have to find a way to start to get those discussions on the table. There there are definitely a lot of trade offs to be evaluated when you look at changes to the business model. And I think it was mentioned by Commissioner Brown earlier around Carmen Smith and some of those. I mean, if you if you start to go down that road, there's a different risk profile that you start to create as well. And those are just, it has to be a very conscious discussion. And and likely, there's got to be a number of different analyses and and data that we need to identify that we need to get and then reevaluate and all the things that we had to do with even just a simple, hey, a simple Lieberg decision is simple relative to some of the things that you're talking about. But it's been on our radar and since you mentioned it, we'll see if other commissioners have that same interest because it's it has been something that's been in our mind.
Mr. Brown, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. I I follow everything that was said, and I think a lot of good things have been said, but I'm I'm good with the way it's proposed and I look forward to discussion in January.
One other item to just bring up quick and then as well as I'm I'm curious about, some of our contracts are expiring 2025. Some of which I think there's a probably a public perception piece we need to get out in front of. And for me, how how we do that and break the public along during that time when we get to that place in 2025. I don't know exactly when it is in 25. I don't know if it's at the beginning or the end. I'm going to be curious to, you know, think about when that work happens and how it happens. Maybe that was a priority mix.
And and that is, that comment is consistent with our strategic plan, which in phase two, we talk about the renewal or the potential renewal of contracts. And there are couple in the 2025, 2026 timeframe. Seneca being one of, I'll call it Seneca, Sierra Pine.
Sierra Pacific.
Sierra Pacific, thanks, send them up. Thanks. Sierra Pacific being one of those that's in that timeframe. So how we daylight that and I think is what I
Brazil's ahead.
Thank you. Okay. And Rod, you had, did you have comments or?
I just thought I'd throw up maybe a different way to to think about it, maybe a little reverse engineering. And it kind of triggered my mind, Mr. Schausberg, which is as the public representatives, you know, sometimes it's helpful to understand what's important to you. And so a couple of examples, maybe the last board meeting was around charging infrastructure, for instance. And so there's not going to be an organizational goal around charging infrastructure next year because that's how does that tie back in to work that we're trying to do in these these themes and business priorities? So charging infrastructure has a lot to do with our our energy, you know, consumption kind of things. And so sometimes if you think about the details that are important to you, another one, you know, the DEI conversation where we been talking about revamping EBR for the year, how the board has some DEI points to that policy that they just, that's an example of implementing that policy. So you can start with that. You can sort of back into your.
Mr. McCray?
Sure, thanks. I will say the first thing that came to my mind along with Borowski is the workforce. It was like, it's, I don't know, it's in the low simmer, like just kind of right at the edges, but constantly something that makes me a little bit anxious too. So I think focus there would be well placed. I agree that rate design, getting started on that soon is the guy who does our work plan for the next year anyway. So I think it's in line. I welcome the conversation that Mindy suggested. That's a great question of what is the future of a midsize utility? That might be a UO master's class, but but it'd be also interesting for us to chew on a little bit and just think about in the context of our strategic plan. So I appreciate you bringing up the question.
That's a 300 level course.
I think it's more.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's definitely, it's above my level, but I want to audit that class.
I do think it's a priority to continue investing in our DEI assessment and establishing DEI goals. I also think be valuable valuable to evaluate the funding that we have set aside right now for source protection. I know this board, before I joined the board, put a surcharge on wire bills. And that has been really significant in providing additional resources to support source protection activities at River. And I just a little concerned that when that goes away, there's a bit of a cliff and we find ourselves maybe we should have hung on to some portion of that. So I don't know where that falls, but I think it'd be worth evaluating at a board level at some point before we get to the end of that. And then the last one is you made a bunch of size investments and seismic upgrades to our water infrastructure, which is fantastic and just a great investment. It's no surprise that I'm also concerned about the seismic performance of those buildings that our staff are in. It is equally or maybe more important that we have staff that are able to have space to work out of. And so I'm not sure if we've done a seismic assessment of our buildings.
This one.
Yeah, this one. I mean, this really is the the main one, but we have others.
We used to have another one down Cameron.
We got rid of that.
We solved that problem.
But there are certainly others scattered around our service territory that would be worth looking at. And then to the extent that there are grant funds, I mean, I know there are grant funds available for first facilities like ours because it is an essential facility. And I think it'd be worth putting our brain into that, under the the umbrella of resilience. And all the other. That's all I have. Thanks.
Hey, I was going to say, Chris McCray, I think that one of the things that is really important for us in what you said was there are certain things that we've committed to to the board, DEI being one of, resiliency being another one. And we also see that where we, there's a little potentially opportunities relative to external finance that align with resiliency objectives, rely on water, there's infrastructure related to water and electricity. There's also some related to climate federal climate objectives as well. So our intent there would be to have an evaluation of what's available on an ongoing basis. But how does that align with the things that the board has already directed us to do or we have identified in the strategy? And also have things that are design ready or project ready that we could leverage those when they do. They they sort of, it it's a little bit of a following the bouncing balls relative to some of those things, but be ready to be able to to take advantage of those. I think it's also, you know, the comment about the watershed. Either side of that same coin that that you mentioned, what are we going to, oh, if the funds dry up, is there this cliff that we fall off of? The flip side of that is how efficient are we being with what we've already have? And and I think so. There's an assessment that's needed there to ensure the validity of those funds being spent in a way that aligns with with what you and our customers believe are important. So it that's an assessment that has to be done with with both of those perspectives in mind.
Well, you're all of the time on this topic. I don't see any others raising their hands. So you have what you need, Frank?
You'll find out next month. Surprise, surprise. We'll we'll see what comes. But I appreciate your your thoughts and comments and this this was helpful. So yes, I did get one.
Okay, thank you. All right, then we will move to future board agendas. Do you want to stay there or?
I'll just stay here.
Okay.
You you have the board agenda report. I think that we have a number of things in in January, the couple of things related to what we just talked about. Also, we want to do a little bit more of a deep dive into how we deploy board policies. So there's a policy review that we would usually do in December. We decided it was okay to push it to January this this year because we have the same board. There's no board turnover, which is important in that, when you're talking about the impact of policies. But we also want to give the board some feel for when you pass a policy, how does the organization implement that policy? And so that's something that, not just a policy review, but how do we handle those things as as a management team and as an organization? As well as we will have an update on the Lieberg decommissioning action plan in January, which I know there's some public interest around. So and that was all just off the top of my head without looking at the agenda. So is there anything I missed? Rod, you've got the the notes for January. I think that's it. Other than that, it seems weird that 2024 is, this is the last speaking of 2024. It's been a really substantial year. I will put a plug in that we have sent you comments for your own evaluation. I think we also, did we attach the various board accomplishments that we saw throughout the year? Was that attachment?
Attach the significant items.
So thank you for all of those significant connection items.
Well, it certainly, I guess we'll we'll move on to board wrap up. It it certainly has been a productive year. I wanted to say thank, you know, thank you to all of you for allowing me to preside over our meetings and get through this work. Appreciate what we do together.
I get reelected under the business of, so never know.
I just want to recognize Sonia for doing such a great job as president this year. You have done a fantastic job leading us through these meetings and I really appreciate your leadership skills. So thank you.
I think one quick comment, I was actually upriver today. Sure, some staff went up there too, as we had really high water and the FinRock project, which full disclosure, my wife works for McKinsey River Trust, so I'm involved in it that way too. But it was designed to spread out floodwater across a floodplain that formerly was not really being activated. And it's really powerful to see that whole floodplain working the way it's intended to and the fast water coming off the river, spreading out across the floodplain and slowing down. And and I guess one thing that I've heard a lot about is concerns about some of those logs that were in there, can be dislodged and really flood river. And it's just doesn't look like that's happening. They're all staying, because the water is moving very slowly through that whole area. I know McKinsey River Trust is giving up a video, so you'll see that themselves shot yesterday or the day before. It's really fascinating to see which the the floodwaters that we had last few days. So I just want to acknowledge EWEB's involvement in projects like that that are, you know, they're fundamental to what we do, but they're also like, most utilities aren't engaged in floodplain restoration. And I think it's just really significant that this utility takes that seriously.
Sharing that. I look forward to seeing that video. That sounds fascinating to me. Let's see.
I'll grab it and share with you.
Okay. All right, everyone. 2023, it's almost a wrap. You get turned.